Adam, you'll let us know when we can get started?
All right, Mr. Chair, the YouTube is live, so you can start whenever you'd like.
Okay, good morning. Due to COVID nineteen, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually by electronic means through WebX webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebX webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who register in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or oddly audio only. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When you're called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We also ask you mute your devices until you are called out to speak. Those participating by video parents will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your argument is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. Other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee are presented submitted in accord with the written submission deadlines. Members of the public are not allowed to use your screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. That will remove you from the panel's role if you fail to respect this instruction. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the credit. In accordance with sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto was called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconform uses, and consents to sever properties to create new laws. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee rendered here today, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government has recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of appeal of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustments. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is as follows. Call each item in the order listed in the agenda. In making your submissions where an application is uncontested, the agents or applicants may proceed with a presentation if they desire. Well, the committee does not require a presentation. Applicants are advised to chair should they wish to address the committee. The committee may ask questions and then take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or their agent, will be given a maximum five minutes to address the committee. And the clock is up on showing up on the board, and someone will comment when you're reaching five minutes, ask you to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please start off by stating your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks also to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent goes first and makes their presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals made at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the matter of being substantially revised in order to ensure that the application is accurate and also to ensure that all those who are entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then the individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation. And when all speakers are finished, the applicant or their agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues and answer those questions that were raised by the speakers, but not to introduce any new information at that time. And that will then mark the end of the discussion. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. Some housekeeping matters to take care of. We have the minutes of the is that April twenty?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the minutes of the last meeting to confirm. Can I have a motion for any of those minutes?
I'll move for confirmation of the minutes.
Visuals of anyone? Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Seconded by?
Mishi McCloskey.
Have a visual. I don't have a visual on.
Mishi McCloskey seconded?
Yeah, I don't have. She's the one person I don't have on the screen. Okay, all in favor? Okay, minutes have passed. Does have any staff or or panel members, I mean, any declarations of interest to declare on matters before us this morning? None to declare? Thank you. Any files to be closed?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I see we have two deferrals mentioned. We'll do with deferrals next before we start hearing applications. So we have a deferrals on our deferral consolidated memo of items five and seventeen, which we'll go to, and it looks like Madam Secretary Treasurer, item ten, there appears to be no notice, no purpose notice on the on the notice for the applicant.
Yes, and then I believe item fifteen as well will be asking for a deferral.
Okay. Okay, so let's, I guess, start first with item number five, which is ten trillion terrace. And we had it on the deferral memo as items two and three, and then in the additional materials, the agent is also requesting a deferral. He agrees with the planning staff request. And the speaker for this application is Orianna Nanoa. The agent for the applicant, Orianna Nanoa.
Morning, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. My location, good morning. My location is nine hundred the East Mall, Suite three hundred, Toronto.
Okay, your name, please state your name.
Orianna Nanoa.
Okay, thank you. So just to recap, can you just give us some what's going on? The you agree with planning, we request that this matter be deferred?
Correct. I'm requesting a deferral in order to allow us more time to consult with planning staff regarding the proposal as well as to secure an updated zoning notice that accurately represents the current plans.
Okay, thanks. Members, any questions for Ms. Nanoa? Or is someone ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion. If no one has any questions, like to move for a deferral based on items number two, three, and at the applicant's request, number six.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Alderson, seconded for that? I don't see any Mishi McCloskey on the screen. Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Okay, the matter is deferred. We'll see you back here again. Have a great day.
Mr. Chair, just confirming, my audio is working, right?
Yeah, I just don't see the screen.
Thanks.
Okay, so the next one is item Minus will then order an item, item ten. That is two oh nine five Codman Crescent. The speaker for that is Paul Cronus. And there's no purpose stated on the on the notice, and any event, planning was looking for refusal, limit approval to one year. We don't want to hear from Mr. Cronus on the merits of that, but just the matter of the deferral.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the committee. I agree we should defer the matter, although I don't believe the lack of a purpose entirely negates the whole notice, because there's a notice that was posted on a property. But just to ensure things are statutorily correct, I agree with the deferral request, and I believe Mr. Adam Wells has accommodated the matter to be back on the agenda for, sorry about that. Accommodated to be on the agenda for June eighth, so we have some time to work with planning staff in the interim.
Okay. Thank you. Members, any questions for Mr. Cronus, or is someone ready to bring the motion for this matter?
Yeah, I'll move for a deferral to June eighth to allow for proper notice.
Thank you.
I believe, Mr. Palmer, it is June eighth. Maybe the committee can confirm, but that's what I heard. I don't have official notification.
I'll just say to the next available hearing date, then.
And if it's June eighth, that would be great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Next available hearing for notice.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. The application is deferred, and we'll see you back here, Mr. Again, Mr. Cronus, be well.
Thank you very much, and you too. Have a good day, everyone.
Okay, so item fifteen, Madam Secretary, you stated it's twenty-three Edinburgh Crescent. It's a one-story rear addition with three variances. Report for information. And the speaker on this application is, oh, we have a, we have a we have the next door and some neighbor at eighty-five Edinburgh also on the line, but the speaker is Shahid Nanavati, the agent for the applicant. We have two, looks like two neighbors on the line, and provided they're still on the line.
Yes, thank you. So this is Shahid Nanavati, and I am from one three zero four Woodbine Avenue. I'm the agent over here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you're asking for a deferral in this matter?
That's right, due to personal reasons. Our aunt has been admitted to the hospital for cancer surgery, so it's been a little much for the family, so we'd like it to be deferred for personal reasons, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Planning is in favor here. Okay, members, any questions, or can I have a motion to defer?
Mr. Chair, do you want to bring up, bring up the area resident who wants to speak?
Right, right, right. All right, we have two area residents on the line.
Mr. Chair, just one. The first person listed is the, appears to be the potential owner of the property. So it's just, it's just the one person who I think might is here, but I, they weren't, they didn't log in in time, so I didn't microphone check them, so I'm gonna go ahead and unmute the area resident, I think, is, is the one that wants to speak.
Okay. The one at eighty-five Edinburgh.
Correct. Microphone check for Parjinder K Kambu. Is this, go ahead?
Yeah, no, I have nothing to say at this moment. I just wanted to hear what was happening regarding the property itself.
Okay, so this matter is not being heard today, as you may have just heard from the agent for the owner. And there will be re-notification this matter is brought back on, so you can, if you have, want to observe that when it's brought back on, and to observe, just to let anyone else who's registered on this list, you can always watch on YouTube without having to actually the matters are YouTube, so we won't be hearing this on the merits today in any event.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, members, so motion to defer?
I'll move to defer. Mishi McCloskey. And wow, the applicant to take personal time.
Okay, thank you. And, oh yeah, looks in the one I said seventeen, all in favor? Or I think I need a second, right? Seconded for Mishi.
Yeah, the second, please. Laura?
Laura, second, okay. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We'll see you here again. Best of luck with you and your family. Okay, so yeah, I said seventeen, but that's in the afternoon session, so we won't deal with that, so we can go back to the top of the agenda in that case. And go back to item number one, which is sixty-eight Glen Agar Drive. It's an application to legalize and maintain the detached dwelling within a tangle garage, a previous committee of adjustment application. May two thousand sixteen approved a variance related to floor space index, which in fact is the floor space index being requested here from point four five permitted to point five five, and it looks like in May they got approval to point five four, so it's one, one more percent. Five meters, five point four meters, or round five that. So very, let's see who the speakers for that. Hear what happened and why they're back here. Searching for my speakers list. Perhaps you can
Mr. Good morning, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is John Mather. I am counsel to the homeowners and agent for today's purposes. The homeowners have asked me to speak on their behalf today because the property is subject to some ongoing litigation relating to the new home construction that, and that litigation may be affected by the committee's decision today. A- as you noted, Mr. Chair, the homeowners received a minor variance in two thousand and sixteen to make the FSI zero point five four. There's a letter in the application from their architect, Mr. Colliotti, who explains what happened, but essentially the general contractor in building the home, framed the house. The way the home was designed is the bricks should have run flush with the foundation of the house. The whole, the general contractor put the wood studs too far onto the foundation such that the bricks couldn't, could no longer rest flush with the house and you know, on their own volition and without consulting the engineers of record and the architects of record built a steel lintel, so a steel, a steel thing at the bottom, the effect of which is the bricks are safe, but the home is slightly larger. But my clients have been in regular communication with the building office, because this has become an inspection issue. Essentially, if this variance isn't granted, they're going to have to reframe the house. And so, as you would expect, our position is that is far more intrusive and problematic for, for not only my clients, but the neighbors than granting what is really, I don't say insignificant lightly, I just mean it's imperceptible. And given that this committee has already found that the four tests are met, and given these unusual and unpleasant circumstances, we request that this further addition provided.
Okay, thank you, sir, for that explanation. It's, you know, construction-related, it seems to be very minor to me. You sometimes see things like measurements of that nature. We'll see if the members have any questions for you. But it's basically five, five meters, I bet, right, five point four?
Yeah, so I actually just have a quick question, if I could. Is the brick cladding secure with the steel shelf now? I mean, is it, you know, is it safe?
Yes, so my understanding, Ms. Alderson, is that with Toronto building, they, they are, they are fine with how it is currently constructed. But one of their requirements to finalize an occupancy permit is that the Committee of Adjustments provide the variance, but as I understand it, the, there's a new, the structural engineer of record is now re-engaged, the contractor had gone to a different engineer. You could probably see where the litigation is coming in, but as I understand it, the city building department is, is comfortable with the structural integrity of the lintel. It's just it now falls outside of the previously approved variance.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying.
Thank you. I got to discuss, so I take it then that that was the only variance when you came for your approval for this new build back in two thousand sixteen, so this, again, it didn't have like fifteen variances, and this was just one of them. It was only the one variance?
I, that is my understanding, Mr. Chair. I admittedly was not involved in the file at the time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. I just pulled up the old application, so that was the only variant, so you only had the one variance, which is sometimes not the case with new builds.
Well, I won't tell the contractors that.
Um, okay, so members, any other questions, or is someone ready for weighing with a motion?
I can weigh in. It's, I'm satisfied that this meets the four tests. I believe there are no conditions other than urban forestry number one. Is that correct?
Believe so.
Yes, okay, so subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Seconded for that?
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I seem to be having I don't see one, before I couldn't see Mishi, now I don't see Neil, so perhaps you can drop Olivia Halliday or Barb, who's not shown anyway, just their name. If that can be switched around, so we can see all members and we're making motions. Thank you, Mr. Palmer, for that motion. Seconded for that motion.
And all in favor? No, actually, I made the motion.
Oh, Neil seconded.
Neil seconded, right, now we just need an all in favor.
Yeah, okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Mather?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on then to item number two, thirty-nine Westmore Drive. It's an application for a canopy to construct a canopy on the northeast side of the existing building with one variance, the north side yard setback of zero. The speaker is David Berg, the applicant, and we have a planning condition of approval.
Mr. Chair and members, David has asked to be on camera for his presentation, so I'm gonna go ahead and make him a panelist now. David, you're a panelist now, so feel free to click the start video button on the bottom of your screen, and I'll go ahead and unmute you now.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee. My name is Dave Berg, the maintenance manager representing Orbis Canada at thirty-nine Westmore Drive. So we are looking to install a offloading crane on the north side of the building to allow us to remove large molds from transport trucks and bring them into our building. So the variance we are looking for is to allow two columns on the north side barrier of their property to be able to allow truck traffic still to pass on the north side of the building.
Okay. Any questions, members? So this is, I guess, the, the variance proposed, as I see in the planning report, it says they propose to construct a hoist system canopy in our purpose of the application, this is the canopy. So I guess that's the relevant part for the variance, for the north side back variance. You're okay, I take it, with the committee, with the community planning requested condition?
They're correct. Yes, we are fine with that. We will just be constructing two columns on the property line, and the canopy will not extend past the side of the building.
Okay. Okay, members, any questions for the applicant? Or if not, is someone ready for a motion? By verbal, please, because I don't have the visuals.
Don Taylor?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I find the request meets the four tests on the Planning Act. And I move approval subject to the Community Planning Department condition.
Thank you. Seconded for that?
I'll second Mishi.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. I take it. I don't see Mr. Palmer, but he's in, he's in favor. Okay, thank you. You got your, your application has been approved with one variance. Okay, so next application is item number three, thirty-two Avon Avenue. And it's to enclose the existing stairs in stairs in the rear yard. A previous committee of adjustment application approved variances relating to the side yard setback length and depth. That was we have a copy of that. We have ravines and Metrolinks advisory comments on this. And the speaker, we only have the one, is Orgi Dakuna, the agent for the applicant.
Yes, good morning. Yeah, my name is Orgi Dakuna. I represented the home on of a two two Avon Avenue. I were proposing to cover the stair. Unfortunately, due to the weather, in some, in winter time, the, you know, the stair is covered with snow. And the stair leads from the garage to the backyard. So they have a hard time to, you know, clean up the stair. So that's why you're proposing that cover the stair.
Okay. Members, any questions for Mr. Dakuna? And if no such questions, is someone ready with motion?
I'll move to approve the application. Oh, sorry, can, can you hear me?
Yes, Mishi, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, thanks. Yeah, I believe the application meets the four tests and move approval subject to no conditions.
Okay, thank you. Seconded for that motion?
I'm happy to second that, but I, I, was the Metrolinks advisory brought up during the introduction. There is a Metrolinks advisory on that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, but yes, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Nice. Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Dakuna, you have your application has been approved. Okay, moving on to item number four, seven Minstrel Drive, an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling, straight top up. We have two variances, the floor space index and the area of the platform on the second story. And the speaker, Stefan Kachowski, is the agent for the applicant on this application. Stefan?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, and by the way, we have nothing whatsoever on this application, no communication from city departments or neighbors or anybody else.
Yep, it's, it's quite straightforward. Basically, all we're looking to do is build over top of the existing bungalow and garage. We're not asking to expand the existing footprint in any way. If we were to keep within the zoning, it would result in a staggered design, which neither us can recommend nor the client would want. As for the platform, the deck, we're looking to have clean lines, and all we're looking to do in the back there is have the deck the same width of the existing garage. If we made it narrower, again, it would be all staggered. It wouldn't quite look right, and if we made it shallow, shallower, it would be unusable. So basically, the aim is to build a home with clean, architecturally logical lines that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and I believe the design we propose does that, and so we're looking for these two minor variances.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions, members, for Mr. Kachowski?
If no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. This is a very straightforward application. I move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, seconded for that?
I'll second.
Palmer? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all unanimous, and I have everyone on the screen now. That's wonderful. Okay, and like I said, there was nothing on that, so you have your approval. Thank you, sir. Okay, item five has been deferred. So moving down to item number six, which is five, the King Gate. And this is an application to construct a new dwelling with an attached garage. And there are seven variances. We have an arborist report. Construction has two conditions of approval, three letters of support. And urban forestry looking for condition number two. And the speaker is Joe Dome, agent for the applicant. Mr. Dome, welcome.
Yes, my name is Joe Dome, one three three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Okay, looks like you got support. And there doesn't seem to be anyone opposed. You're okay with the transportation conditions, I would take it?
Yes, that's right. I would like to make a short presentation.
Sure.
The, the owner would like to construct a new two-story, single-detached dwelling to accommodate their family livability needs. This is a lot at the corner of the King Gate and East Glen Crescent, and as you mentioned, the owner has spoken to the neighbors, has received letters of support from the adjacent neighbors, three, the King Gate, four, the King Gate, and thirty-seven, East Glen Crescent. And the owners also had further conversations with two more neighbors. They have no concerns. Planning has no concerns as well. To the variances themselves, variance number one refers to the proposed FSI, which is a reasonable increase to zero point five two and lower than a number of other approvals in the immediate area on East Glen Crescent. Variance number two refers to the proposed exterior side yard setback of one point two four meters, and I'd like to highlight that this applies only to the northwest corner portion of the dwelling, while the rest of the side main wall widens out to a one point nine one meter setback. There's also adequate space on the public portion of the side lawn, and it doesn't require an interior side yard setback variance. Variances three and four refer to the proposed dwelling length and depth. The proposed eighteen point eight meter length includes the privacy wall next to the small second story rear balcony on the southeast corner. The majority of the first and second story dwelling length is eighteen point two nine meters, and these variances are within the range of approvals in the immediate area, such as a few houses down the street at twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty, East Glen. such as a few houses down the street at twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty, East Glen Crescent, and five, North Glen. Variance number five refers to the proposed front and rear main wall height of seven point three three meters, which is a small increase over the seven point two meter bylaw, and will have minimal impact over the, as of right wall height. And furthermore, the proposed dwelling meets the bylaw for overall height. Variance number six refers to the eve projection, and this is for the north exterior side yard, and as I mentioned, there's a substantial public portion of the, of the yard. Variance number seven pertains to moving the driveway from the King Gate side to the East Glen Crescent side. We were in correspondence with transportation early on to make sure that this was acceptable to them, and the attached transportation report says that they have no issues with this variance, and further elaborate that there are a number of other examples in the nearby area where driveways for corner properties are located off East Glen and at a similar distance to the intersection, and in fact, across the street at four, the King Gate, there are two driveways, and one East Glen and one North Glen have similarly switched their driveways. Impact is further mitigated by the fact that the proposed dwelling meets the bylaw for overall height, lock coverage, front yard setback, and interior side yard setback, and again, adjacent neighbors are in support. Overall, we feel the requested variances are reasonable in minor nature, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Dome, for that presentation and explanation of the variances. Any questions for Mr. Dome, or someone ready for a motion? And we do have transportation conditions and urban forestry.
Mr. Chair, Don Taylor, I have a question. Just looking at the variance request number two for the side yard setback.
Yes.
It, I'm just looking at the plans, and it looks like this variance is with respect to the north side lot line. It looks like the south side lot line is less than three meters as well, and I'm just wondering if, A, if that's correct, and B, do you need a variance for that as well?
I believe there are different bylaws based on the exterior versus the interior side lot line.
Okay, so you don't, you haven't, you haven't missed a variance.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no more questions, I just roll on with a motion on this one. I think it's pretty straightforward and meets the four tests. I move approval subject urban forestry condition number two and the transportation department conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Second for Mr. Taylor's motion, Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, you have your approval. Thank you, Mr. Dome. Okay, moving on to the next application, which is number seven. The address, six fifteen Gary Ray Drive, we have revised, highlighted in yellow revised notice for the agenda showing both variances, there were two variances have been revised. As we do have still the two variances, the purpose is to construct an ancillary structure, open steel structure in the real yard. And we have on this application an email from the applicant, and planning has a condition of approval, they would like the proposed structure to remain open and not be enclosed. And the speaker on this application is Giorgio Fresca, the agent for the applicant. Giorgio, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Giorgio Fresca. I'm from Frescons and in planning at twenty seventy-one Highway Seven here in Vaughan. I'm here representing the client.
Okay, so rather straightforward, you, this is the steel structure, if you can just explain something about that?
Sure. So the, the client is in the, is in the construction business where they produce structural steel. The covered, the covered area at the back is, is, is pretty much done for truck, for loading purposes, once the fabrication of the steel has been, has been done inside the building, it moves to the outside where it gets loaded on to, on to the trucks and shipped out to their sites. The, you pointed out, Mr. Chair, the, the structure is all open on all sides for easy access and, and doesn't, one of the, one of the items from planning was to ensure that it's not closed, and, and we can assure you that will not be closed, so the, the building, the structure will always be open and all, and all, and at all times. And the, we went, we went back and forth on planning on the, on the setbacks, and we eventually ended up agreeing on what we presented in front of you. So everybody seems to be in favor of the, okay, with the application as, as presented.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions for Mr. Fresca, or is someone ready for a motion?
Sorry, quick question. Sir, you're okay with the conditions suggested by Planning Department?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions. I'm ready for a recommendation. So I'm gonna move for approval. Variance is requested meet the four tests in the Planning Act, and that's subject to the planning condition that it shall remain open and not enclosed.
Okay, thank you. Second for Mr. Palmer's motion, Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Okay, unanimous, you have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I'm, if I may for one moment, I have an area resident who's logged into the meeting but hasn't authorized the use of their microphone, so I'd like to bring it to their attention so that they can log out and log back in before their item is up.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Katerina Sterovic, I see that you've logged in, you're here for item number eleven, but you haven't authorized the use of your microphone, so if you'd like to speak to item number eleven, ninety-one Glen Agar Drive, please log out and log back in and authorize the use of your microphone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so our next application then is number eight. Nine Saunders Crescent, we have a revised, again, notice page highlighted to show changes, they didn't make the first. So this is an application to construct a new two-story garden suite in the rear yard. There were five variances, the first two variances have been deleted, so we now have three variances. Urban forestry is looking for conditions one and two. We have a correspondence from the applicant regarding revisions. We have four letters of opposition and two letters of concern. I don't believe we have anything from planning. In any event, the speaker on this application or speakers is Robert Abrahams, the agent for the applicant, as well as an area resident at twenty-three Uno Drive.
Mr. Chair and members, I want to bring to your attention that the area resident is present on the call at this time. I'd also like to bring your attention that the agent who did not register prior to the meeting has provided, printed in a late request to be on screen. So we're gonna go ahead and accommodate that because we have the ability to, so I'm gonna go ahead and bump them to a panelist now. Bob, you're now a panelist, you can activate your start video by clicking the start video button at the bottom of the screen. And going forward, please make sure you register in advance for the meeting.
I require, I made that request because I didn't understand, and I thought perhaps I wouldn't be admitted to the meeting, so I'm glad that's here now. I want to spare the committee a lengthy presentation. I would, I would only like to perhaps clarify some of the matters that have been the basis for objection, so that I think the committee will see clearly that they're without basis. This is just a two-story garden suite.
I think, I think, I think we need a full presentation, the presentation is, it's kind of unique, we haven't seen a lot of garden suites, we haven't seen a lot of approved garden suites. So I'm, we do not, any planning, so just, can you just outline what you have had discussions with community planning, and I see they have not weighed in here? Which, there, I have no, yeah, so Mr. Abrams, please make us a short presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we actually did work with planning quite a bit, and they were very helpful in abating many of the variances that, that were showing up, and we, we eliminated them. So that we only have the ones that pertain to angular planes to continue here. So this happened, you know, my, my client, Aminder, lives in a very small house, if you've seen the house at Nine Saunders, with her husband and her parents, Darshan and Amrjeet, and they're living together, extended family in this very small house, so they approached me about the garden suite zoning, and so we designed one that takes advantage of the, of the zoning ability to have a basement and to have a second floor, so that they can have a, a nice livable home for them on site, they can age in place as an extended family, which they are used to doing. And they have a large lot, which is frankly, must have been the, what the writers of the zoning contemplated when they, when they allowed a second story, because most Toronto lots, you know, were quite small in old neighborhoods, but this is a very large lot. But it's irregular, and the property lines are not, are not orthogonal to each other, there is a healthy tree that we're avoiding. And so, you know, the way the geometry works out, we require three angular plane variances in order to to build that second floor, second floor, which is contemplated by the zoning. Okay, so it's, it's basically, it's, it's a small livable house in the back of a large lot. And in terms of the, of the objections, just to run through them, generally speaking, one, one person objects to garden suites in general, I don't think that has any merit. It's in the zoning. Somebody objected to the quality of the renters that would likely be there, well, it'll be Amrjeet's, Amrjeet and Darshan living there. My clients, and to the extent that there may in the future be renters, we're in the city and we can't control who our neighbors are. Somebody objected to there being a basement. A basement is explicitly permitted in the zoning, and at any rate, doesn't have any impact on, on the neighbor's quality of life. So I think that that's just a, a serious objection. Somebody objected to water runoff. Water runoff is not a subject of this application. When we go through the building department, they will ensure that our downspouts discharge correctly, and we're not allowed to discharge on to or cause runoff on to another person's property, we're simply not allowed to, so that's not an issue. Somebody objected to tree removal. This, this application does not require the removal of any trees, in fact, it's partly caused by citing the new building far away from the existing healthy tree, so that urban forestry will not object, and so that we don't damage the tree. So that's not, there's a misunderstanding there somewhere, there's no trees that are to be removed. South landscaping was an objection. Well, we, after working with planning, we now comply with soft landscaping, there's no variance there. And it's very hard to do, because you have to count the area of site that the garden suite sits on as well, so we comply, and it's not an issue. Somebody objected that it's larger than the main house. It's not. Even though the method of measuring the main house and the garden suite is, is kind of prejudicial towards the garden suite, you're, you're required to include the basement, but not the basement of the main house, even with that method of measurement, we still are smaller than the main house. And the drawings clearly show that. And the last objection that we heard from the, in the letters, where, was that it would be a violation of neighbor's privacy, that there is windows on the rear facing the neighbor. That's simply not true. If you look at the rear elevation, it's a blank wall. And there is a small window for daylighting in a laundry room closet facing eight Saunders, which frankly, you know, anybody would have a window treatment on. It's, I don't think it's an invasion of privacy, but it's, it makes them happy to be willing to put a, a, a film or something on the window to, to allow light in, but, but not have any overlook through that small window in the laundry room closet. So that's, that's what we want to do, and in my, in my opinion, this this is within the, the intent of the zoning to provide additional additional housing within the existing neighborhood, honestly, a very large lot that can accommodate more density and should accommodate more density under the
Yes, can wrap up, please, you're over five minutes, but thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, so if you could just help me understand, like I said, we haven't seen many of these, we haven't seen many of these that got approved, because community planning is usually, you know, they try to, the ones we've seen, they've tried to make them bigger than the main house and other issues, you're right, this is a big lot, just to help me understand for the first time, we've seen this, the variance, so it looks like it's the three different, exactly the same, and different sub-sub subsections of the bylaw. I, little I, little one, two, three, Roman numeral, but so the measurement, it's, it's not like you're at forty-five, you're at forty-six, but if you were, so is it that if you were one seven, one point seven one meters further away, you would comply with the, with the angular plane, that's what we have to understand this. And in one case, you're at point seven, one point seven one, and one of them, you're one point seven nine, is that a typo? Or a different measurement under that subsection?
Yes, you know, I, I I understand that the zoning reviewers are, are, are busy, but in, in speaking with him, he, he told me that the way he's getting these numbers is by scaling on Adobe Acrobat, which I was very disappointed to hear, since we have dimensions on. Anyways, I let it go, because the numbers that he's come up with, we can easily comply with by moving the building a matter of centimeters, okay, so I didn't want to cause more work by having, getting his revised zoning notice, but they're fine.
Right.
But, yeah.
The three and four, three and four would ideally be at one point seven nine also, like number variance four, is that what you're saying? And again, I don't know if we
Yes, yes, but yes.
Okay. Okay, so I don't know if we'd have a, you know, notice issue if suddenly we made items three and five, increase them in point zero eight of a meter, but you can say you can live with what's before you here. Okay, so thanks for that explanation, sir, now I understand.
May I answer your other question? May I answer your other question about
Yes, sir.
the meaning of the angular plane variances? So yes, it does mean that if we would move this building one point seven one or one point seven nine meters away from the property lines, we would not need a variance. But then it would be too close to the main house for which we would need a variance, so we, we're trying to balance all these three-dimensional offsets in a way that is least violative to any of them and to the tree.
Okay.
So if it was a one-story building, we would not be here today, we would not need any variances. This is simply to, to allow us to put a second story.
Okay, so this is a unique, you know, new, new build form being permitted in the city, so thank you for giving us that explanation, it looks, and giving us one that is, meets with community planning support, or at least non-objection. They haven't weighed in with a report for information or anything, so we take that, that they're, they're okay with this. Okay, members, any questions?
They would object if, if, if I would not work with them, and of course, I did work with them, and they were very happy with the outcome, and and withdrew their objection, yes.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions?
If no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Mr. Chair and members, don't forget, there's an area resident that's on the call that wants to speak to this.
Right, right, sorry about that. We do have one, we, because he went through all the objection letters, so yes, we have Bonnie Starling at twenty-three Uno Drive on the line. Leave that below behind the property, obviously more impacted by the people on Uno, because it's at the rear of the property, so let's hear from Bonnie Starry, and my apologies for forgetting about you.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, committee. I'm at twenty-three Uno Drive. And I must admit, this is my first committee in bylaw zoning, so I really, I'm not quite familiar with the language being used. Just, I guess, and, and the gentleman, and I'm sorry, I completely forgot who spoke about this, and I'm relieved at some of the concerns that he has addressed. But my main concern is that the property is very close to, that is very close to the property line, it's two stories, it's, it's very large. And yes, there are privacy issues. But I'm concerned about the root system, that's, there are elm trees in the, in the backyard, as well as in neighboring backyards. And we know that the canopy of a tree and the root system of the trees is larger than the canopy of the trees, and by building a basement that may disturb or damage the health of the neighboring elm trees. I'm not an arborist, but that is a concern, as well as privacy, even though there aren't windows at the back of the property, there is still that foreboding large building. And I think it's great to have family members living on site. living on site. My concern is aging parents. Well, how will they get to a second story? And um, and is the second story really necessary? Um, and yeah, my, my concern really is, will this set a precedent for this neighborhood? And you know, what will happen for the people who have sizable properties? Um, how will this affect the privacy of other, of other families and other homes? Like the reason we love this neighborhood is the large trees, the open space, and that sense of not being in each other's back pocket. That's, those are my concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Starring. So yeah, and I listen, you're about five houses. It's directly behind, you're at number twenty-three?
Yes.
And it looks like it's behind thirty-three, but we do have letters from like thirty, thirty-three and thirty-five who are more, you know, more directly affected um, by that. In terms of precedent, every application is looked on by its, on its merits. As you know, this is a new uh, new build, built forum. It's been recently been approved by the city uh, in order to address the tremendous lack of affordable housing in the city. So this is now a permitted build forum, as Mr. Abraham said, if he didn't, if he could move the property one point seven one or one point seven nine meters away, he wouldn't even have to come to committee for a variance.
Right.
So it is what's now before us, the city. So whether it's, if it's a precedent, it's more that these lots with a small house and a large lot can accommodate that without being overly uh, offensive of the angular plane or other potential variances. So anyway, I'll let Mr. Abraham answer first. Let's see if any of the members have any questions for you. None for Ms. Starring and the street behind. So let's uh, let Mr. Abraham address what you've had to say. And hopefully he's alleviated some of your concerns.
Yeah, thank you.
Concerns. Yeah.
Yeah. So one concern was um, privacy. And I, I, I don't know what um, what the respondent is uh, getting at, because as you mentioned, her, her house is five houses away uh, from the subject house. Perhaps she um, is speaking for what she imagines her neighbors to be experiencing, and that's very neighborly. But um, uh, as I mentioned, there are no windows facing um, any neighbors other than a very small daylighting window, which would obscure uh, if requested to do so. Um, and as, as for the uh, putative um, damage to trees from the basements, I'd remind her that um, even if there was no basement, we would need to dig down almost that far, certainly below any tree roots um, in order to build foundations, four feet below the ground for frost. So the basement is, is neither here nor there. Uh, certainly we've, we've located it away, far enough away from trees that were beyond the root systems. And we also have oversight from the Toronto Forestry Department to make sure that uh, any other um, um, uh, matters relating to the health of trees are respected. We have the, 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 the tree police on us as well. So I, I don't, uh, I, I don't think that her concerns um, are um, um, anything that the committee needs to um, be concerned about with relating to, to this request.
Okay, thank you. Members, any quest, last minute questions for uh, either the agent or the neighbor, or is someone ready for a motion?
Just to ask the applicant, you are okay with urban forestry condition number one and number two?
Yes, we are.
Okay. If no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. I believe this application uh, meets the four tests. So I, I'm actually thrilled to be approving a garden suite. We don't get many, as the chair mentioned, we don't get many to approve. And I'm pretty excited about this actually. And um, uh, I'm happy that the applicant worked with the City of Toronto on, on some of the variances and in fact eliminated uh, variance number one and number two. So I move for approval. Um, and subject to urban forestry, number one and number two, I have no other concerns.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allard, for that motion. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, the application is approved. You have your garden suite has been approved. Thank you, sir. Thank you to the neighbor for weighing in uh, and participating. Okay, it is now ten twenty-five. We're, we normally have about nineteen or twenty in our morning session. We only have sixteen, so we only have six left to do. So let's take a fifteen-minute break and I believe we'll still be able to finish well in advance of noon. Um, no side bets on that, but uh, let's take a fifteen-minute break. We'll return at, with your approval at uh, twenty-two eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
Laura, if you want to get your can before you go?
Okay, well, just waiting for a couple of the other members to get back. And we can get started. Okay, item number nine forty Grove Tree. It's an application to instruct the one story rear. And we have two variances. The cover ladder planning has conditions of approval. Ravines has no condition. Transportation has. Sorry, TRCA has two letters. One is no objection, but a permit is required. And the second is to confirm that email confirming that this table. A stable tabletop of bank is actually. Shown on the site plan drawing. And that's all we have. The speaker on this application, we only have the one is Matthew Surianno, the agent for the applicant.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Matthew Siano from Siano Architects. And we are the architects for Mr. Andrew Marangoni in relation to the variances being thought at forty growth. You've wrote in a Tobaco M nine V two Y two. I do have a small presentation if that's acceptable.
Sure, go ahead. Just to point at my introduction, I missed. We also have a letter of support from thirty eight right next door. And we have have urban forestry requesting condition two. So please go ahead.
So we are seeking a total of two variances to the zoning standards to accommodate our proposal, which is a one story rear addition to the home. Both variances relate to the same condition being low, being delocation of the proposed new building. Within ten meters of the stable top of bank of the rain located at the rear of the property. So this is an existing condition as the existing home is already within ten meter, within the ten meter setback. The proposed new extension has been designed to simply maintain the existing setback, which is four point eight three meters from the stable top of bank. And does not propose to move any part of the new structure closer to that line. Therefore, the variances intended to recognize and permit that four point eight meter setback from the stable top of bank that exists today for the proposed new addition at the rear. So both the TRCA and planning staff have been satisfied with the application and do not oppose the variances. We did engage the TRCA back in twenty twenty one to begin discussing the requirements. And through our coordination with them, they confirmed that they would support a proposal at the rear of the house, provided it does not pass the current extent of the home. As a result, the building has been designed to match the current setback at the rear, satisfy the TRC's request. The plan diagram provided in our supporting material shows the rear setback condition. It clearly demonstrates that the request that the TRC has been satisfied in the proposal. That is now before you. TRC staff have been have provided a letter confirming that they have no objections to the requested variances. In addition, city planning reviewed the application and also have no objection to the variances. This is confirmed in the staff report dated April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. That was submitted to the committee. Staff have asked for two conditions regarding the inclusion of bird friendly treatment on new windows and clear balconies and exterior dark sky compliant light fixtures. The the owner of the property is fine with these conditions. We also understand that urban forestry has asked for a standard condition regarding the submission of submission of applications to permit or remove an injury. Injury of trees where applicable, similarly, the owner is fine with this condition. Finally, also providing our materials are three letters of support, most importantly, from the neighbors directly to the north and south of the property. Therefore, there therefore, the two variances before you with both which both relate to the setback from the stable top of bank are appropriate and should be approved. They do not result in any adverse impacts or and represent good planning. The variances are minor. They are desirable for the appropriate development of the land. They maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, and they maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan. As a result, we would respectfully submit that the two variances being requested meet the four tests under section forty five of the Planning Act and should be approved. So thank you for your time today and I'm happy to answer any of the committee's questions if needed.
Right, just want to clarify, there were three letters of support. I just said the one at thirty eight, but in fact, you have the one also at forty two as well as one at fifty four. So thank you for that presentation explaining the situation here. And let's see if members have any questions for you or if they're ready for a motion. There are no other speakers. Members, any questions for Mr. Surianno or someone ready to weigh in? Mr. Taylor?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm satisfied the requested variances meet the four tests under the Planning Act. And I move approval subject to urban forestry condition two and the community planning department condition.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Second for that motion. Is Alderson, thank you all in favor. It's unanimous, you have your approval, your application has been approved. Thank you, mister. What's your name here? Mr. Surianno, okay. Number ten has been deferred, so we can move on to item number eleven, which is ninety one Glen Agar Drive. It's an application. To. Construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling, a new covered front porch, two story rear and west side addition. And there are two variances. We have an arborist report, urban forestry looking for condition two. And in the additional materials, we have a letter of objection from one Dornoch Drive. We have only the one speaker on this app. So we have three speakers on this application. The agent for the applicant Eddie Perez, as well as the neighbor in one Dornoch Drive and the neighbor at eighty nine Glen Avar. Right next door.
Mr. Chair members, the area resident at one Dornoch Drive is present on the call. The area resident at eighty nine Glen Agar was present. It was the resident who I asked to log off and log back in and authorize the use of their microphone. They did not return after logging out.
Oh, okay.
So I do wonder if they were actually, I do wonder if they were just here to just to watch and didn't ask the application tech about any options available to them on how to watch.
Okay, maybe they heard me mention at some point that you can watch on YouTube, I think on one of the other applications.
I wondered the same, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, if we're not, they're not here, they're not here unless they, well, Mr. Perez and the other neighbor speaking, they happen to log back in. If you're listening, Katerina Tharsevic, if you'd like to participate, you can please log back in. Otherwise, I guess you're observing on YouTube or something else came up. Okay, so let's hear from Mr. Perez.
Hello, good morning, Chairman and committee members. I'm Eddie Perez here on behalf of the owner and we're the designer of the project. As you can see, we're adding a modest addition at the back with two stories, only one point four meters in in depth, and we're adding a side addition behind the garage to make it squared off. We have no coverage variance. We have oversized side yards. We have a front yard variance that is only for the second floor because we're going in line with the existing house. So that's why it's a variance, it's already an existing variance. And the second variance is the coverage. I mean, the floor index was instead of forty five percent, we're proposing a modest fifty one percent. I feel that this is very minor in nature and it meets the force test. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, you have a floor space index of point zero six forty, less than forty meters, thirty five. And. The other one is the front yard setback, which you said is an existing condition. And any questions for Mr. Perez before we go into here from the neighbor at one Dornoch? And we can get the neighbor's letter on the board as well. And no questions for Mr. Perez? Okay, so let's hear from. Diana Fedora at one Dornoch Drive, and we can get her letter up on the board, it was in the additional materials. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Again, I I haven't participated in any kind of committee of adjustment. Issues, but as you know, I'm on the corner lot next to ninety one Glen Ager. So I'm bordering Glen Ager and Dornoch. My concerns are one with the, it is a smaller lot. I have myself, I have a very large lot plus the city. But at ninety one, it's just a normal, regular. Lot, and they have a swing pool in the backyard. So with the two story addition, first, let me say that I can understand why they want to rebuild. I probably would do the same. But the two story addition is going to block. Any light I have and any view of any sky or any tree, and it would to me be like living in a prison. And I'm on that side of the house frequently. All the often, and the second, so I feel it does affect the quality of my life. And the other thing is, I'm concerned that when I looked at the the plans online, it appeared that the house was going to be built closer to my property. Pretty line. It didn't appear to me that it was on the exact same property line as it currently is. And right now, there's they have multiple heavy vehicles and trucks. They have difficulty keeping. Their their vehicles on their property and almost breaking a new. They broke their their cleanout valve on that side of the property and almost hit mine, which was replaced last year along with the plumbing lines along the underneath them to the house from the city. So I am concerned about the the width of that property, the number of vehicles, the how close they're going to get to the property line, to my property line. So. You know, I I'm sure they're lovely people. I just want, I am expressing my concern because this is my opportunity. The second thing is that. If they could have windows that gave mutual privacy, I would be greatly appreciated. I mean, they don't want to look at me and and, you know, and it's a mutual respect for each other. And I don't know where the windows line up to mine. So that was another issue. And the the third thing was with the fencing. The previous owners, when they put up that fence between the properties, deviated from the property line on the north end, not very much. But I hadn't said anything at that point because they were not very good people and I I just stay quiet. I don't raise any issues with neighbors. I just, but they they were, I spent years of being harassed by them. So I never said anything about that, the fence line. So I am concerned, I know they probably had a survey done, but new owners. And I just want to make sure that the fencing, should anything happen during the construction, that it goes up along the appropriate property line. So that was my point about the fencing. So those three issues, it was the quality of life, it's the movement closer to my property line. And the the fencing issue. I was never consulted about this rebuilt ahead of time. So this was a surprise. I'm not, I'm not surprised that they would want to rebuild, but I'm surprised at the timing.
Okay, thank you. Matt, just before we let Mr. Perez respond to that, just let you know what the role of the committee here is to approve the variances, not the build. So the only two things before us are the distance from the front lot line, which is a little closer than permitted or and then required under the bylaw, as well as they're about thirty five meters over. There's no issue about how close they are. It's not too tall, it's not too, and it's not any closer than it was for maybe closer with Mr. Perez and what the existing, but I it's just additions, it's not a brand new bill here either. Like they're knocking the house down and starting with a new house. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Perez, because just want to know what you understand, what we're here approving and not approving. Those are the only thing, two things that are before us.
Mr. Chair, I just want to bring to your attention, the area resident that was off the call did not reappear.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for confirming that. Because, and again, if we can get the location map on on the screen, so it looks, you know. Ms. Fedora, you're a corner lot, so you're in a, you know, you're, I taste your post fronts on to Dornoch, not on to Glen Ager, so you're the corner house. So obviously, it is close and you are affected sort of in a key lot type situation with the existing house. So anyway, okay, let's go back to Mr. Perez then for his rebuttal to your comments and your concerns. But I want to have any questions first for Ms. Fedora before we did that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Perez.
Yeah, as as I stated earlier, we're just bringing the the wall behind the garage in a straight line, which is no variance. We're at one point five two meters from their property line. And as as after we add this small modest addition, we're only at fourteen point four three meters long for the house where you're allowed seventeen meters, so we're way below what by law allows. This is very modest in nature and like I said earlier, meets the four tests. And as you can see, the neighbor's house is much longer than ours is. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions either from Mr. Perez of the neighbor or someone ready for a motion? Mister Mister Taylor, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just I'm gonna make a motion just before I do that, just a quick response to Ms. Fedora, who who makes the good point that a two story addition will certainly change and have an impact on sunlight and sky view and greenery view, to use the words. However, it's important to note, as the chair did, that. There's no height violation was proposed here. So in other words, as far as the height goes, what's being proposed here is as of right. I find the variances to be very minor in nature. I'm satisfied they made the four tests and I move approval subject to urban forestry condition two.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The second for Mr. Taylor's motion is Alderson, thank you all in favor. Okay, the application is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Perez, and thank you, Ms. Fedora. And we can move on to the next application, which is item number twelve. Eight Tilden Crescent, we have two sets of revised notices for the application. So we originally had fourteen application now following the second revision. Mr. Master Andrea can perhaps correct me when he is starting to speak, but it looks like we had fourteen variances. We're now down to six and three of those six have been revised. We have planning. So I say modify, ask if it's revised, but oh, yeah, that's it. Planning is giving us a long memo of certain revisions and I'll be asking Mr. Master Adrift, he's complied with all of those rather than going through them. But he can do that. Forestry, urban forestry condition two, transportation has three conditions of approval, and there's five letters of support from two, twelve, eleven. And fifteen Kingdom. Okay, urban forestry number two, I already said that, and speaker is Mr. Leo Master Andrea. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Leo Mastandrea, I'm the agent for the owners at Eight Tilden. And yes, we we talked to planning staff and we did address all their concerns. And that's why we reduced our variances from fourteen to six. So yes, we do comply with all their conditions. That was based on a conversation that we had, but I didn't have time to prepare the drawings. So that's why she prepared that staff report. I only have one little minor amendment. To everything is for item number. Item number fourteen. Should read. Proposed parking will have a width of four point one eight. So in addition, we are revising that to address other concerns.
Okay, so you're bringing that closer to compliance, and we don't have a notice issue, right? So it's not like you're making four point six eight, you're making it less.
Correct.
Okay, so that again says the wish should be instead of four point six seven?
Four point one eight.
Thank you, Mr. Master Andrea. Okay, so other than that, you've complied and looks like you did a lot of work with the double revisions. And there's no one else here. You do have those letters of support from the adjacent neighbors, as I've stated at the outset. So let's just see if members have any questions for you. Thank you for working with community planning to bring that initial fourteen down.
I do have a question. Is urban forestry still requesting refusal of this application? Or now that the revisions have been made, are they okay?
I see that on the, for Mr. Andrea's answers, I see that we have an overall memo. I see that on the for Mr. Andrea answers, I see that we have an overall memo consolidated. It's urban forestry two, but we do have that standalone memo recommending their refusal of variances, one, two, and seven.
So that was prior. That was prior to our revision and we're just in the process of preparing an arborist report to deal with forestry.
Okay, and I see that those three variances that they recite have all
Revised, yeah.
Yeah, so that was based as the memos dated March twenty eighth. And so the consultant memo is way after that. So Mr. Messenger, you're telling us that their concerns have been alleviated now and you're going to be dealing with them on that.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? And no other questions. Is someone ready to weigh in? Mr. Taylor?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm satisfied that the variance is requested meet the four tests. So I'm going to make a motion with respect to revised agenda page dated May third. And I move approval of that revised agenda, subject to an amendment to various number fourteen, reducing the proposed parking space width from four point six seven meters to four point one eight meters as requested by Mr. Perez in his presentation. And my approval would be subject to urban forestry condition two and the transportation department conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Just point out the speaker in this one is Mr. Master and Mr. Perez was the last one. Yeah, I see he's also a bunch of precedent materials, I guess, other other approvals in the area.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Second for Mr. Taylor's motion. Mr. Palmer's hand up went up first before the other two. So I assume my next question, it's appears it's unanimously approved. All in favor? Okay, Mr. Master Andrea, you have your approval. Thank you very much and be well. Okay, our next application is item number thirteen. Forty seven James Street is an application to construct a two story rear addition. There's the only the variances that it's the existing semi detached dwelling is not a permitted use in RD zone. The existing semi detached dwelling is a lawful nonconforming use and the proposal is to construct a two story rear addition. Any alterations or additions and or changes in use of a legal nonconforming building or structure requires the permission of the Committee of Adjustment. And in addition to the four tests, in this case, I believe we normally look at whether the proposed change is bringing it closer to compliance. Here it's not a permitted use. But in any case, that's what's before us. We have before us. Yeah, we have some objection letter. It was a little. We also have the Long Branch got character going. I've been picked out and the there's a marked up sort of objection letter, which is very hard to ascertain what's going on with this. We have a series of emails and there is no others. There is a speaker with the applicant or agent is Toivo Bahi, as well as we have a neighbor representing an agent representing a neighbor next door at forty five James Street. So let's hear first from Mr. Bahi. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Toivo Bahi, Seventeen Bridle Trail, and I am acting as the agent for the homeowners. As you'd stated, the purpose of the application is to construct a two story rear addition to an existing detached single family dwelling. The requested variance to the zoning by law, as you stated, read that the semi detached dwelling is not a permitted use in an RD zone. So we're here today asking for your permission to to construct the two story hundred or fifty seven point five nine square meter addition to a legal nonconforming building at forty seven James Streets. We understand that this property, it is listed as a heritage non designated, which basically means that the property is not protected under the Ontario Heritage Act and as a result, no bylaws or designations are attached to this address. The only requirement is that notice is given within sixty days of intention to demolish or remove a structure on that property. Obviously, there's no intent for destruction of any kind on this application. The existing brick structure, which is I we assume the the heritage portion is to remain as is. So we also understand that all applications are subject to the Long Branch neighborhood character guidelines. We did submit an application with the performance standards checklist and we feel confident that the guidelines have been followed. We believe the the variances are minor and meet the four tests. The homeowners are deeply valued in this property are committed. They're invested for the long term and want to be part of this Long Branch community. So I'm thank you for that and I'll listen to the opposition and I guess Long Branch representative.
I don't think we have a representative from the Long Association, but I believe we have someone representing the neighbor next door at forty five, who appears to have there's some draft agreements about responsibility for any damages and notations on that. We have several pages. So it looks like there was some discussion about from the neighbors, some concern about construction damages or other issues about the Eve's trough angles or whatever, but nothing looks like this has just been handed to us in our material. So we'll hear from hear from the neighbors representative is what what their concerns are directly rather than have to discern that from some marked up emails. Okay, so does anyone have any questions first for Mr. Bahi before we go on?
Palmer, I have a question. Sir, the the uses is not a permitted use. So to what I guess you're not building to really any zoning standard because it's not a permitted use. So I guess I have to ask, do you think this is an appropriate built form in what you're proposing?
Well, obviously, absolutely. We do feel that the the size of the addition, it is a very small house to begin with. And because of the the size that requesting for the the only sort of if you went by the actual zoning bylaws, if this was a listed as an appropriate use would be the floor space index and floor space index reads for this zone as point three, five, and we're proposing point five, five, six, five. But in saying that, because of the lot size, which is basically half of what the the regular lot sizes would be in the neighborhood is is why this number seems a little high. Again, I I stress that that the addition is is not very large and it it would beat the 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 intent of of the zoning bylaws and the and the act if it was related to or compared to a regular sized lot.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Thank you. I was just saying, Mr. Taylor, very, Mr. Palmer, very good question because because it's a legal nonconforming use. We don't actually go into the performance standards listed that we normally would see on this two story addition. So very, very good point to to bring up. Okay, so let's no one had any questions for for the agent. Let's hear from the neighbors representative who is Colin Simpson.
Hi, you there?
Hello.
Hello.
We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yeah, I'm getting a little bit of a feedback when I speak, which you have a second device open?
No, I'm it's a very primitive setup here right now. I'm on a phone. So it's been fairly muffled. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members, I thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of James Wilson, owner of forty five James, who's been here forty seven years.
If you sustain your again, this is formally for the record with your address and name.
Colin Simpson, twenty Leopold Street, Toronto.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
And so, yeah, he's my cousin. He's asked me to speak on his behalf. I know a little bit about this. I've been building houses most of my life. And my dad was a building inspector with the City of Toronto for twenty five years. So the only thing I want to mention, I have all the documents in front of me. I've been reading through them. And I believe that the plans originally submitted were declined on the basis of not meeting building code. And that's just a small part of it. But one of the things I was really interested when I started to look into it as I I used to be a really good friend of Mark Grimes. So I used to follow all the different building going on in this part of the world. And one of the things I know growing up in the area of Mimico is that Long Branch, as I've seen on their their various standards, are very concerned about maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood. Because this type of structure will only really impact one person, which is James Wilson of forty five. I'm just going to quote three point two height enassing clearly under the principles. It will not only remove all of his sunlight from the rear of the property on two major windows, kitchen and bathroom and bedrooms. Because of the height and the extension beyond the existing structure will dramatically affect the quality of life that he's known for forty seven years in his home. On three point two point three, the building rationale, I say the same thing. They're coming into the backyard substantially affecting the visual and comfort of the rear yard of forty five. The wall is going to be in excess of twenty feet high and twenty feet from the rear of his current house. They talk about three point two point four, the type of material being used. As I heard the architect say, the hundred year old building is brick. The addition they're putting on two stories high is going to be of a different material, of which has not been clarified yet, whether it's going to be vinyl, wood, metal, don't know what color. Definitely going to be a an eyesore for the only person that's going to be able to look at it every day. Not to mention three point three point five, also the same thing, to ensure that the changes of reinforcing signals the change of the building form. It's going to completely change the structure of a hundred year old semi detached house. Not to mention the walls are paper thin during construction. It's going to be one heck of a nightmare for the person living here who is home twenty four seven, retired. Also, they mentioned in the drawings, and I'll see it, side yard setbacks. There is no side yard setback here. This wall is going around the property line twenty feet high. And the rear walls obviously are going to change all the visuals, primarily sunshine. I was just out there just now. As of two o'clock in the afternoon, there will be no sun. Plus, the other concern I would have is if I was owning here is the drainage. They may be able to put weepers around and connect to the city draining system, but it's going to create a wall, which during a heavy rainstorm could actually cause water to go into the basement of forty five. They mentioned on the Committee of Adjustment application, the front lot line is not being changed. The side lot line substantially on the one side, which is opposite to where forty five connects. Just join the two structures are going to be a challenge. So then I go down, we're looking at the tree protection. I'm not sure what the area is going to want to do. But as you notice, there's a couple of pictures that were submitted. Tree number three, which is a very large, very mature tree, standing probably, I'm going to say thirty, forty meters high. You can see from the pictures, it's a very mature tree whose roots, if they follow the canopy, when they go to dig for their addition, they're going to encounter some major roots. And if at all, they're they're going to be damaged with a backup. And you can see the tree canopy is substantial also. Now this structure they're building is going to come quite close to that tree. I can't see any way that that tree will not be affected. And then I noticed the tree one in the front of the yard. I know that when I build, I have to protect these trees from any construction. I'm not sure in this case if it's applicable because it is on forty five's property, but it's right in the center. So I'm not sure what they're going to do to protect that tree because it would impact access to the front of his house and his driveway. As you can see, the car where it's parked. So I don't know how that would be addressed. But I don't know, I I just I don't see how this type of structure can be added, as you say, nonconforming use. It's been denied and I don't see any changes to the drawings that's going to address these issues. And especially the four or five points I mentioned on the Long Branch Neighborhood Character Guidelines, the Performance Standard Checklist, at least five are clearly not being acknowledged.
You're almost at six minutes. If you could wrap up, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Simpson before we go back to Mr. Bahi for his rebuttal? Okay, if none, let's go back to Mr. Bahi.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the call and Simpson representing the neighbor. I I'd have to say that for the record that I had three conversations with James Wilson, the neighbor and his and you know, address his concerns. Again, going back to the the original bylaws and we we are actually conforming with every aspect if this was to be addressed as a typical bylaw concerns related to a property that is allowed or a building that is allowed that conforms. We we the only the only again, the only the only thing that would have been a variance request would have been the floor space index, height restriction, we have complied with, side yard setbacks, we have complied with. Yes, it is a semi detached home. So there is a zero property line or party wall condition. We can't avoid that. We've we did approach the homeowner prior to going to zoning. If he would agree with a a parting wall agreement, which would benefit both both sides of the property. He did not, and that's fine. So we we are now obviously doing a zero property line setback, which is standard for semi detached. I don't know where Mr. Simpson, the agent has any information in regards to this being denied. That's false. We this we have gone through the process through zoning and zoning to committee. Obviously, there's been no denial of application. So that is false information. In regards to the tree protection, yes, we will comply with urban forestry. There is a large tree in the backyard. We are going to get an arborist report. The tree as it stands, based on the TPC zoning, we are outside of that for that size tree. So again, we will comply with whatever urban forestry and the arborist allows us to do. And in terms of the addition itself, it is going to be a metal sided addition. Again, we have to conform with the building code. It will be obviously one hour fire rated resistance wall, which again is 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 not related to the zoning application. But that's just a question I'm answering at this point. The existing brick structure, which is the heritage point, is remaining. That is not being touched. The connection to the roof is a flat roof design, which lessens any of the shadowing effect onto the neighbor's property. And in going forward, we have assured the homeowner that we will, you know, apply to the the right of way entry policy, the construction requirements guidelines as set forward by the City of Toronto and the noise control bylaws will be adhered to. We understand that he is a is a single older man living there and notice will be given and we will work diligently. notice will be given and we will work diligently with him in order to make this process go easier.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, also point out, I guess, this application, we don't have any, uh, communication or appearance by the Long Branch Neighborhood Association, who are certainly very vigilant and, uh, monitoring these applications and appearing when they feel necessary and weighing in. And we don't have anything on this one, correct? We don't have anything from Long Branch people, the Neighborhood Association?
Um, okay. If I may just say, we did submit the application to them.
Okay, you haven't had any discussions with them?
We have not had any response from them. We assumed that they would be here at the hearing if they had any concerns.
Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, members, any questions for, um, the agent or, or the, or the agent for the neighbor, or someone ready for, uh, a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for a motion. Um, uh, I believe the variance requested is minor in nature and meets the four tests. I think we're looking at a situation where you've got a modest home here and it's, it's a modest addition, um, to the home. So they're, they're building in accordance or proposed to build in accordance with the standards that, uh, would be in place if it were a permitted use. Um, so they're sensitive to that. So I'm gonna move for approval subject to forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. You have a second for that? Oh, I, I don't know if I mentioned it, but just in the record, we did have the additional materials. I mean, we have eleven, eleven letters of support. Is that correct? Just to add that to what's before us. Uh, thank you. A second for Mr. Palmer's motion. Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. You have your approval. Thank you to, uh, both parties who spoke. And, uh, we can move on to the next application, which is item fourteen, eighteen Sunnydale Drive. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Previous committee of adjustment application approved variances relating to floor, gross floor area, floor space index, front yard setback and side yard setback. We now have before us, uh, seven variances and, um, we have the previous decision, where, which is September two thousand sixteen, September twenty-ninth, there were three variances and the application was approved at that time. And planning is recommending refusal of this application. In the additional materials, we have revised, um, notes, uh, some of it looks like it was garbed, garbled in response to the planning memo. Revised notice, uh, we have on that one. So perhaps we'll have that up on the screen. Okay, and the only speaker on this application and the urban forestry is looking for condition one is Jonathan Benkowski, the agent for the applicant. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Chair, good morning.
Good morning. So, yes, we need a presentation on this is to give them the, uh, community planning, uh, memo. And we have a copy of the previous decision from two thousand sixteen.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, yeah, if we could zoom in on that revised agenda page. Uh, in speaking with planning, I have made a series of changes to the proposal. I could quickly review them. Um, they, they are on the screen there, the revised agenda package. Uh, I'm altering and revising variance number one to read as forty-four point seven five percent of the lot area or a hundred and ninety-three point three seven. I would note, and I'll get into this later on, uh, Mr. Chair and committee, that that coverage does include a rear covered deck at the rear. So I'll review that later, uh, as I get into my presentation. I'm also revising variance number two to be forty-seven percent of the lot area or three twenty point four five. Additionally, the FSI is point seven five or three twenty point four five square meters. Variance number three.
Hold on a second. I'm just trying to get, I'm looking in the additional materials to get the latest revised one up. Doesn't appear to be, can't get my bookmark here, so I'm just scrolling. So this is what's up on the board. You're reciting the numbers that the changes are or not further changes to this?
Correct, Mr. Chair, exactly as what is on the screen. I can continue if you like, or I can get into a presentation. Um, I would leave that up to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we just, you outlined now the changes and, uh, it's up on the screen. So perhaps why don't you include it with your presentation, I guess?
Yeah, I, I, I think the big ones are we've eliminated variances number four, five and six.
Okay.
Uh, so again, we have spoken to planning, uh, regarding this application. Um, we arrived at these changes essentially by increasing the east side yard setback from point six to point nine. What that change did is it decreased the coverage, decreased the FSI, as well as eliminated the setback to the deck at the rear. Uh, additionally, uh, as we increased that, we also reduced the, uh, width of the driveway, uh, at the front. Uh, as I mentioned previously, that coverage request number includes the covered rear deck, uh, that is at the rear. Again, that is now zoning bylaw compliant with that side yard setback. If we could now go to the site plan, please. So the only built form request that is before you today, leading to this increase, uh, of coverage as well as FSI, is a reduction in that side yard setback from one point two meters, uh, as per the zoning bylaw to point nine meters to what is proposed before you today. We could just zoom in on the dwelling itself. Uh, if we see that side yard setback there, that portion of the dwelling that has the reduction in the side yard setback is a modest fourteen point four seven meters in building length. So if we take the impact of that reduction of the side yard setback, that portion is fourteen point four seven meters. The dwelling overall is actually well below the bylaw requirement for building length and any impact that might come from this increase in coverage, as well as FSI is mitigated by the setback being compliant to the north, as well as that building length being compliant, as well as the reduction to the set, sorry, to the east, uh, at point nine, again, with the modest fourteen point four seven meters in length. We have removed the variance for landscaping to the rear, uh, as well as that setback to the deck. Uh, in my opinion, these changes are reflective, uh, of an application that represents good planning, uh, as well as the height being zoning compliant, again, mitigates any impacts to those adjacent neighbors. Uh, and I would just finish up by saying, both adjacent neighbors have obviously received the notice that is, uh, for the application that is before you today. Neither one of them is present or have, uh, written a letter of objection, which in my opinion is a small indication of a lack of impact felt by both adjacent neighbors. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee might have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we see the planning wanting you to make the changes as the writing of this memo, you hadn't, so now you've made the changes, as you've just outlined. Um, yeah, the date of the memo was April seventh. Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Benkowski?
Sir, um, what's the current coverage and FSI and?
Uh, well, it is, it is a modest bungalow through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Um, yes. Not, I'm not sure if I have that. If you bear with me for one second.
Okay, maybe, maybe put it different way. What's the square footage of the addition you wanna put on?
Okay, I can tell you.
Is it, yeah, I'm guessing you're already over the bylaw and you're just adding.
Yeah, it's, it's over the bylaw. Very weird zoning in how it reads where you have a percentage that you're able to occupy over as well as an FSI. So, so where I am today, can just bear with me for a brief moment. The existing dwelling, again, is very modest in size. I, I don't have the exact number, Mr. Palmer. But again, it, it would be a modestly sized bungalow dwelling on the property.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Benkowski?
Yeah, I have a question. The, uh, new build across the street. It's basically across the street. I don't have the number in front of me, but I'm just wondering, do you know what the FSI is for that particular new build across the street?
I'm not sure of the exact number, but, but I can tell you, planning's comments were, they wanted us to reduce it. Uh, I, again, I don't have that exact number. Um, but again, we did reduce, uh, as per the recommendation of planning. In addition to removing the landscaping variance they had an issue with, uh, as, as well as, I believe, the projection of the deck they also had an issue with. But I would just also go back to, um, the lack of a kind of a built form, really, which is just a reduction in that side yard with that portion being the modest fourteen point five seven meters, uh, you know, in my opinion, really is reflective uh, of a, of a built form and amassing that would fit on the street. Again, from Sunnydale itself, it's just a, it's just a reduction of point three meters or one feet, uh, of massing that we're requesting, um, that would really be visible for an impact on the streetscape as well as the adjacent neighbors.
What about number twelve? So number fifteen is directly across the street, but what about number twelve? Do you have any idea what the FSI is there and how it compares with, uh, your proposal?
No, but again, number twelve, uh, again, is fairly similar in a built form. If we actually look at the building length, uh, as it would be on the, the, uh, city website. So again, it would be fairly similar. Because garage is included in this calculation, it skews that number a little bit because this is a larger garage. So that FSI is driven partly by it not being a pure single-car garage. It is actually kind of a one and a half, which also drives that FSI number up a bit slightly.
When, I just have some concerns because when city planning is asking for refusal, I, it's, I think it's, uh, incumbent on the applicant to bring forward comparables, especially as it pertains to directly to the, to the house that's being proposed. So I don't have a, I don't have a comparable on the right, have the house right next door or directly across the street. I don't, I don't know what, how it compares to what you're proposing.
Mr. Benkowski, still with us?
Oh, I'm here. I didn't, I'm not, wasn't sure if that was a question, Mr. Chair, or, or more, more of a comment.
Really a question. It was just a comment. I mean, it's just, uh, you know, it's, I think, are you, were you aware that community planning was seeking refusal?
I was. I spoke with community planning and it was reflective of the changes, uh, that we made to increase that side yard, uh, and, and make those changes. Yes, I was.
So we can see back on the board, the, uh, latest iteration showing the variances that have been changed and eliminated. See your position as you've addressed planning's concerns by those series of changes.
Uh, when, when I spoke with planning, uh, the request was made to reduce it. There wasn't a concrete number provided. Uh, in my opinion, again, wh- when I look at and how we interpret FSI and that intent is an appropriate amassing of how it would fit in with the streetscape as well as the neighborhood. In this case, the dwelling is well below zoning bylaw requirements for length as well as depth. Uh, we're not, we're not requesting a height variance. The only built form aspect that is driving that FSI is, is a modest reduction of point three meters of a side yard setback to one side. Uh, I, I would say in my opinion, that would not accept the streetscape, uh, upset the streetscape or provide any type of negative impact to the overall neighborhood, uh, as a whole.
Okay, thank you. I see the way the variance two is written. It says, it actually specifically says the proposed dwelling, including the attached garage. It does at least give that indication. Sometimes, you know, usually like the basement's not included, correct?
Correct.
Sometimes the cleaning plank says, yeah, well, the basement, if the basement is included, if it wasn't included, it would be why. So anyway, you've given your answer. So, uh, any other questions or Ms. Alderson, do you have a follow-up on your question? Or does anyone have any other questions? Or is someone ready for a motion?
Uh, I, I'm ready for a motion. Um, I'm pleased with the revised application. So, uh, I'm gonna move for approval. It meets the four tests. In, in particular, I look at the side yard setback in the previous decision. The side yard setback, I believe, was point nine in the bylaw and he went to point six in the previous, uh, approval. So he's gone back to the old bylaw provision and, and point nine is, I think, an appropriate setback. Front yard isn't being varied. The rear yard's not being varied. Uh, I think reducing the width of the houses has bumped a lot of the variances down and, and we've got an appropriate amassing and appropriate form here. But I think fits in with the neighborhood. Um, so I'm gonna move for approval. Um, subject to forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. You have a second for Mr. Palmer's motion? Mr. Taylor, thank you.
I'm sorry, I will second it, but I think, uh, we need to have a friendly amendment on this because according to my notes, it's urban forestry condition one.
Yeah, that's what I have too.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll. Number one.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, I'll take that seconding the motion. All in favor? And unanimous approval. Thank you. Thank, Benkowski.
Thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Okay, fifteen has been deferred, so we have one more item, item sixteen, the last item of the morning session, three Bearwood Drive. It's an application to construct a two-story rear addition, a new rear deck and a new front porch. There are five variances. We have a cover letter. Planning has given us a report for information. TRCA has no objection. We have support three on Eden Bridge and four on Bearwood, including, looks like one adjacent neighbor anyway, number five, as well as, uh, two, four and six. And in the additional materials, we have, uh, ravines and natural feature protections advised, and they have no condition. The speaker on this application is Marco Razolini.
Yes. Good morning, Chair. Marco Razolini, Secora Design Inc., ninety-four Lake Shore Road East, Unit two oh one, Mississauga.
Okay. Uh, anything you'd like to let us know? I don't think we need a, uh, fullsome presentation.
No, I think everything's covered in the cover letter. If anyone has any questions.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we have your cover letter with drawings and, uh, pretty comprehensive, uh, letter. Thank you for that. Doesn't look like there's any forestry condition and ravines and RNFP are fine with this. And you have support for your neighbor. So, uh, any questions for the agent or some ready for a motion or, uh, I guess, yes, that's it. Question or motion?
Uh, I'm ready for a motion if anyone has any questions. It's a pretty straightforward application. Uh, I move for approval, uh, with no conditions. I believe it meets the four tests under the Planning Act.
Okay, thank you. Second for that motion. Ms. McCloskey, thank you. All in favor, unanimous approval. You have your approval, Mr. Razolini. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And, okay, we are now, we've now concluded the morning sessions and we can start, I assume, at one P M. Uh, unless you, that gives us an hour and twenty minutes for the break. It's good to see you. Uh, you wanna do the, add on the sound check at?
Quarter to one.
Quarter to one and we'll start at one, right on time.
Perfect. Thank you, members.
Okay, okay, thank you. Have a good break, everyone. Okay, okay, thank you. Have a good break, everyone.